Let's go ahead and try this. I think it is 6 o'clock. It is time to call the Sherwood City Council Meeting to Order, April 27th. It is 6 o'clock. Tim, Councilmember McMahon, would you lead us some prayer, please? I just unmuted you.
Can you hear me now? Yes, okay, all right. Father, thank you for the evening that we have together. Even though we're separated, we can still conduct this meeting. And we pray for your guidance to keep our Internet system up and running for us so we can have this meeting. Thank you so much for protecting our city and the citizens and the people in it. And Father, we pray that you continue to protect our health workers, those who are on the front lines every day, our police and fire and our EMTs and all of our doctors and nurses and caretakers. Lord, we love you. Thank you for loving us and give us guidance and wisdom tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public, which stands by its nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Come to the roll, please. Here. Harmon.
Here.
Lilly.
Here.
McMahon.
Here.
Hi. Here. Sanders.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Rodrick.
Here.
Approve of minutes of the regular meeting on February 24, 2020, and special call council meeting March 19, 2020, as transcribed. Some moves.
Thank you.
Hi. Yes. Brooks.
Hi.
Lilly.
Hi.
McMahon.
Hi.
Sanders.
Hi.
Harmon.
Hi.
Rodrick.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
You have in your packets February and March 2020 financials. Are there any questions or discussions?
Okay.
Are there any questions or discussions regarding the February/March 2020 financials? Hearing none. Next item on the agenda is asset list removal. I just need a motion and a second to remove these assets from last year.
Some moves. Thank you.
Hi. Hi. Mary Jo, can you hear her?
I think she's got bad Internet connection.
See if it'll pass without her.
Let's go ahead to the next one. Brooks.
Hi.
Lilly.
Hi.
McMahon.
Hi.
Sanders.
Hi.
Harmon.
Hi.
Rodrick.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
Committees and/or commissions. Advertising Promotion Commission.
We did meet in March, since we met at the first of the month, and I think those minutes were in the packet. Of course, we didn't meet in April, and hopefully we'll, we may be doing a Zoom meeting for May because we will be meeting in May. We do have an ordinance, and it had an emergency clause on it, but we do not need the emergency clause. So just ask Steve to read the ordinance.
An ordinance authorizing business to be conducted between the City of Sherwood, Arkansas, and a municipal employee concerning the purchase of advertising and promotional items. First reading.
We are buying some cups from Dawn Darter at the Greens, and those are going to be used for advertising promotion purposes with the Chamber Golf Tournament.
Hey Marina, can I ask, did they, that's just going to be delayed?
It is going to be in October, is that right, Steve?
October.
16th, I think.
Okay. So even though this is not an emergency that we pass this, I would like to go ahead and pass it so that Kelly can go ahead and get these ordered, but we don't need an emergency clause, just if we go ahead and get passed.
I'm having a motion. We spend the rules and place it on the second reading.
Second.
Hi. Did she still not hear me? She's not logged in, I don't think, right now. Brooks.
Hi.
Lilly.
Hi.
McMahon.
Hi.
Sanders.
Hi.
Harmon.
Hi.
Rodrick.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
An ordinance authorizing business to be conducted between the City of Sherwood, Arkansas, and a municipal employee concerning the purchase of advertising and promotional items. That's the second reading.
Spend the rules and places on the third reading.
Thank you.
Hi. Brooks.
Hi.
Lilly.
Hi.
McMahon.
Hi.
Sanders.
Hi.
Harmon.
Hi.
Rodrick. Williams.
Hi.
April, I couldn't hear you. I saw your mouth move. I can't hear you.
Can't hear Rachel.
She can't hear us either. Can we do the chat thing? Okay. She's, she's in the room next door. I think they'll be checking. They'll be working with her.
Okay, I just read a message that Mary Jo's trying to reconnect via cellphone.
Oh, okay.
Well, I've got a, okay.
Okay, I got a, I got a quick question. I saw April's mouth move, but I couldn't hear her, so.
No, you need to hear her for the vote.
Okay.
Angela, I'm back on too.
Okay, so. April still can't hear. Her next door, I'm, I will, they're watching the meeting, so they'll be beginning with her.
May I ask your point of clarity?
Whoa, 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 hang on. Where were we in the vote?
I made a motion to spend the rules and place it on third reading. And that's when Angela was calling the roll, and Mary Jo nor April could vote because we couldn't hear them. So that's where we are.
Did everybody else vote?
Yes. That's six.
Okay, April, can you hear a sound?
She don't have sound. She's moved into a new computer.
Where I am, and you can use my computer.
If you can hear me, I would recommend you reading the ordinance one more time just for Mary Jo's sake because she was offline at the entire time.
And can I suggest we don't replace live meetings with Zoom meetings?
Thank you.
As soon as we get this coronavirus over with.
Maybe we need lawn chairs in the front yard out there.
Or just spaced out in a room. I think, I think if we all spaced out, we could do it six feet apart.
Legal counsel, are we waiting for April to join back, or what's your?
Well, okay, we don't know what her vote was on. I mean, we think she said aye, but we didn't hear it. So I don't have, we don't have a full roll call vote, and Mary Jo missed that too. Mary Jo, can you hear us now?
Yeah, and I didn't even get a chance to hear. Could you read it again like Tim had asked?
Sure. An ordinance authorizing business to be conducted between the City of Sherwood, Arkansas, and a municipal employee concerning the purchase of advertising and promotional items.
Did it, did anybody say what the items, approximately what they were or anything? Was there any?
There are some Yeti mugs that the Chamber will be purchasing, and AMP is going to sponsor, and they'll be used for promotional items mainly for the upcoming golf tournament, which has been moved to October.
Okay. So that's aye for me.
Okay, well, now is that going to go on the first reading or the second reading vote, Steve?
Mary Jo, would you have voted aye on the first reading and the second reading?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
So we're through the third reading. Do we have April back?
Back. I had to, I lost my.
April, what was your vote on the second reading?
Aye.
Okay, does that complete that for you, Angela?
Yes.
Okay. An ordinance authorizing business to be conducted between the City of Sherwood, Arkansas, and a municipal employee concerning the purchase of advertising and promotional items. That's the third reading.
Hold for adoption.
Thank you.
Hi.
Yes.
Brooks.
Hi.
Lilly.
Hi.
McMahon.
Hi.
Sanders.
Hi.
Harmon.
Hi.
Rodrick.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
This is almost comical. Okay, and she's withdrawing a request for the emergency clause. Need to take a vote on that. The record just needs to show that that, that will not be included in the ordinance that is, becomes the official ordinance. We'll withdraw that. Mary, you want me to continue?
Please.
Okay. Plan of Commission. An ordinance amending the existing zoning code with respect to submission requirements and for other purposes. First reading.
I'll just spend the rules and place the ordinance on second reading.
Was that you, Marina? I'm sorry, yes, it was.
Hi.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Lilly.
Hi.
McMahon.
Hi.
Sanders.
Hi.
Harmon.
Hi.
Rodrick.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
An ordinance amending the existing zoning code with respect to submission requirements and for other purposes. That's the second reading of the ordinance.
May we spend, place the third reading?
Hi.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Lilly.
Hi.
McMahon.
Hi.
Sanders.
Hi.
Harmon.
Hi.
Rodrick.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
An ordinance amending the existing zoning code with respect to submission requirements and for other purposes. That's the third reading.
For adoption.
Thank you.
Hi.
Aye.
Brooks. Lilly.
Hi.
McMahon.
Hi.
Sanders.
Hi.
Harmon.
Hi.
Rodrick.
Hi.
Williams. Williams.
Aye.
Okay, Street Committee, Kevin, did you want to, did y'all meet or did you want to report anything?
Really nothing to report at this time. We do have the ordinance from our last February meeting. It's on here. Just did want to kind of offer some clarification on that, but we want to read it one more time first. This is good.
Okay. An ordinance establishing rules for the operation of wheel devices within the City of Sherwood, Arkansas, setting penalties and for violations of said rules and for other purposes. That's the second reading.
So just a point of clarification here. You know, there, there is a specific issue in part of my ward where there is a, a young person, I'm going to say late teenage years, who is riding a skateboard in a fashion that is bothering and to some degree scaring some of the motorists that are driving vehicles. And, and so that's what this is to address. You know, the, you know, police have been called, feeling that maybe there wasn't anything in place that really allowed them to address, you know, a, a person who was operating a non-motorized, you know, wheeled vehicle, you know, in the street. So certainly there, there is no desire to, you know, keep kids off of skateboards or not allow them to ride. I know that there has been an amendment to the, to the ordinance that was presented. And I think the, the big thing, at least from my, my perspective and the perspective of the Street Committee, is that, you know, number one, folks that are operating, you know, in a, in a way that's negligent and unsafe, you know, that's really what we're trying to address. And so with that, I mean, I'll, I'll just, you know, open up for questions or any other thoughts or concerns before we move forward.
I have a question. Councilman Lilly, you know, one thing I just noticed prior to the meeting is under Section 3, you know how the whole definition of offensive was removed in the edits, original edits? In Section 3, in that second line, it says a device in a negligent or offensive. I was wondering if that word offensive was supposed to have also been redacted at that point.
He's not the one that made those edits. I am.
Well, I know you are, but it was his motions while we're addressing him, Charlie, so, you know.
Well, yeah, I would, I would address that question then because I'm the one that made, that made the recommended changes. I wanted to say that the changes, I think Don Berry may have called a lot of us after the first meeting this was addressed. I know he called me and said that his neighborhood, Kevin, I don't know if he's the one that contacted you originally, Don Berry called me and said his neighborhood was, he claimed it was the one that was having the problems. Gap Creek, I guess, is my recollection, although I've been locked in my house for a long time since standing a little crazy. I don't remember exactly. But he said Gap Creek was the one that had the problem. And Don Berry and I are the ones that worked together. I told him I had some problems with the language at the time, and he and I are the ones that worked together and came up with this amendment to the, to the ordinance. So Don Berry and I worked together on this amendment to the ordinance. And I'll tell you, the problem I had was twofold, and we talked about it at the meeting when we talked about this ordinance. It was a little open-ended, number one, and number two, the term negligent looks at the violation from the viewpoint of the offender. You're saying the offender is being negligent, and you're, you're analyzing his action. The term offensive is a subjective, is a subjective term from the viewpoint of the person who the offense is against. So you're saying you offended me, so you should be arrested or you should be fined or whatever. And I don't like it being, I don't like the term offensive because it's from the viewpoint of the person who the offense is against. And so that's the reason that I took out offensive. And then negligent, the original term, original definition of negligent, I felt like was too open-ended. And I tried to, and I think this goes to Kevin's comment, I tried to make it a little tighter and say that negligence was, you know, if they're operating in a hazardous manner where it might injure themselves or somebody else, or if they were going to damage property. So that was kind of a clearer definition and gave the police something to work. But I agree, offensive should have come out. That was a miss of mine. Offensive should come out of Section 3, the first sentence of Section 3. And then I told Steve in my original email that the second sentence of Section 3 should come out because I didn't feel like we had any responsibility to be regulating to this extent what was supposed to be done on private property. You know, if somebody doesn't want skate walks and bicycles on private drive, roadways, private property, they could have signed up and say no, no bicycles, no skateboards or whatever on private drives and private property. We need to be regulating the public, not the private. Those were my comments.
Also with the bicycles, bicycles fall under a different category in state, in state law. And so I really think that bicycles need to, that what bicycles can and can't do is already defined under state law, and I don't know that we should be messing with that. And then the, the other thing is self-propelled. Self-propelled, to me, is like an electric scooter, not manually propelled. Would, I would think be a better term than self-propelled. Self-propelled makes it like it's doing it itself, not that someone's making it move, if that makes sense.
It says propelled by human power. I didn't get to self-propelled.
Yeah.
They're under the whereas. The proper regulation of self-propelled wheeled vehicle.
Oh, that should, that's, yeah, I don't think that should be in there because the regulation is propelled by human power. So that self-propelled shouldn't even be in there. I didn't even, I didn't even read the whereas. That should be out. Yeah, that shouldn't be in there either.
And I do think bicycles should be struck out of that.
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure I agree with that.
Well, you could put hovercrafts if you wanted to, but bicycles actually by state law are entitled to the same privileges as an automobile.
We regulate automobiles.
Yes. Versus pedestrians, for example, are not, don't have the same rights as a car or a bicycle. So bicycles can, by law, by state law, be on the roadways. Now, they can't inhibit the safe flow of traffic. They can't run a stop sign. They have, you know, certain things that they have to follow. But I don't think that's what we're really looking at in terms of here. It would be, it would fall under the same thing if someone was driving their car.
Okay, let me ask you this. We regulate, we have the authority to regulate cars in Sherwood, and we do regulate cars. Their speed, where they can park and things of that nature. So by virtue of the fact that cars are regulated by state law doesn't mean we can't also regulate them in city law, number one. Number two, we're not telling bicycles anything in this ordinance that they can't do. State law says they can do. They can't be operated in a negligent manner in such a manner that they would hurt somebody or that they can damage property. So I don't see a problem with this.
And it's already covered under traffic laws. Charlie's what I'm trying to say. We would be redundant by putting that it's already covered.
Councilman Harmon.
The gray area that's not covered.
Could I recommend that because of the changes you made from this evening, we get the new copy for it to go for the third reading next month?
I don't care. I don't know. This, this, yeah, this is, this is Kevin. There would be a council, there would be a question for Kevin.
Don't we need to amend it officially then with the changes for the next reading?
I can read to you what I have down as the amendments, and you can tell me, and we can, you can, we can vote on that. It could be like the first reading is amended if you want to do that.
I like that.
Okay, what I have is in the whereas, we're going to remove the self-propelled and just say regulation of wheel devices. Under Section 1, under definitions, the original negligent definition will be removed and replaced with the one that was sent for your review over the weekend. The section regarding offensive will be removed in its entirety. In Section 3, we'll remove the word offensive in the first sentence, and then the last sentence will be removed in its entirety. Is that your amendment?
Yes. And I'm also asking for friendly.
Self-propelled needs to be changed to human-propelled.
So self-propelled, you want to say human-propelled?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, that, otherwise wheeled vehicles, I mean, you know, that probably even goes beyond, you know, what we've listed here specifically.
Okay, Mary Jo, I'm sorry. You, you said something, and I couldn't hear exactly what you said.
So instead of bicycles, I would think scooters or something that's not already, already being regulated by traffic laws. So you either strike bicycles altogether or put something as such. Because there's other wheel devices like scooters and things like that that are not covered in here where people could, I guess, be crazy on.
I don't have a heartburn with bicycles being in it, you're saying, Mary Jo, but I don't have any, it doesn't, I heard what Charlie said, that it's okay that, that it be included in this. And I, I liked his argument about it.
Well, it's, okay. It's, it's already covered under traffic laws.
I heard you.
It's covered, and to me, where it starts to get murky is because it's in a completely different classification than these other things. And we have, already have laws regulating specifically bicycles, not only in the state level but on Sherwood level. Like, you could get a ticket in Sherwood if you're not wearing a helmet, you know, on a bicycle. We, we already have all these things covered in Sherwood on bicycles, but we don't have anything covered on these things. So that's why I'm saying we don't need bicycles in there, but maybe we need scooters or, you know, other wheel devices that are, are not listed here.
So I, I'm glad that we're going to talk about this next month, but this is what gives me heartburn. I understand that we want to regulate so that we don't have a bicyclist or a scooter or a skateboard get in the road of, of a driver because then we're impeding the driver. But when we, when we start talking about negligent and being hazardous to themselves, I mean, I think when we met in February, we talked about all the times when we were kids and our nieces, nephews, and riding their bikes, and you know what I mean? This, the way this is worded, then we're opening up, are we going to start giving tickets to parents because their kids were being negligent when they were riding their bike? And it was, we went from damaging property, with that I'm totally in agreement with. I just think we're in a gray area when we start talking about regulating people and what they, what their parents say is okay.
Is, is it possible to maybe have something where it's basically, these type, type of wheeled vehicles cannot inhibit the safe flow of traffic? Because I think that's all we're looking for, is that, not that they not be allowed to play on these and do these, but that it not cause accidents, that it not inhibit the normal traffic flow. That's kind of, it's the traffic flow situation that's happening in Gap Creek where they're slamming off their brakes and swarming to miss these kids and that type of a thing.
Well, that is absolutely spot on. And, you know, the whole intent is not to, you know, punish a kiddo from going out and having fun and riding their, you know, their skateboards, their scooters, I mean, you know, whatever it is. You know, there is a specific situation where a person, in this case, it happens to be a skateboard, but they're, they're riding it in a manner that is unsafe for the other vehicle traffic. Okay? So, I mean, you know, the, the Street Committee looked at several different ordinances that were supplied, and the ordinance that we modeled after came out of mail mail, and it seemed to be more in tune with what we were trying to accomplish, not punish kids for going out and having fun and doing what kids do. Okay? So again, the, the intent is to stop the, the unsafe operation of whatever kind of, you know, vehicle it is, that, that's the intent. So, you know, the, the wheeled devices, I mean, you know, those are kind of sticky. I think you could fill up with, with a lot of different names. I like the, the term human-propelled. I mean, that makes a lot of sense to me, but I mean, there, there's an issue that we've obviously been unable to address from an enforcement or a legal perspective. And the intent is to give, you know, give the police the ability to enforce something that doesn't allow that unsafe operation. That, that's, that's the intent.
I, I like that wording that Mary Jo just had. I think that's the crux of it. The other side thing would be when Tim talked two months ago about them riding the skateboard on the roof, and the issue is, yes, it's private property, but the only teeth that the police had was a misdemeanor. So I don't know if we'd be mixing two things, but to add in, you know, if you don't have the permission and it's private property where they could find them rather, because then the next step was the misdemeanor, and that's what we were trying to avoid. And to me, those are two separate things because we're talking about someone's private property and they don't have the permission. Which is separate than being on the road or on a sidewalk.
Well, there's trespassing, and, you know, I, I kind of feel like that could be covered through other things. But I don't know if we need to co-mingle this in this ordinance, the private property. I was kind of like with Charlie where I felt like we were kind of getting into an over, overreach on some of it.
Almost seems like we need to get the final draft we're going to go with and bring it back. I'm, I'm a little bit confused now what we wanted to say. We've talked about so many different options. Councilmember Lilly, what's your thoughts on that?
Well, I mean, so I think we've got a recommended amendment in several different areas. I would like to, you know, get that, you know, completed in its ownness. I would like to, you know, get that, you know, completed in, in its wholeness and then redistribute for our next month's meeting. Uh, you know, again, we, we do have an existing scenario that currently we're not, not taking any action on. So, you know, now, now we, we've postponed this, you know, another sixty days, and it's going to go on over thirty, so I would really like to come to our, our main meeting with something that's, that is passable, that's acceptable, that it, it addresses the, uh, the, the intent, and hopefully that everyone can, you know, buy into from a, uh, perspective that, that we, we need to get something that, you know, the, the police can, can act on without arresting someone and sending them to jail for a misdemeanor.
Okay, well then, can I read this again, and first reading is amended, and then we'll, we'll make the changes that we discussed this evening, and push it to the end of where it, it can be read a second and third time or amended at that point in time and pass. Is that satisfactory?
Steve, can I recommend something I think everybody will be agreeable to, that I think Kevin just made me think of? Since it's been sixty days, it'll be thirty more, and I also recommend that an emergency clause be added at the end.
Sure.
It's, it's been, uh, it'll have been ninety days by that time, Kevin, but thank.
Yes, it would.
Okay.
Thank you, Charlie.
And ordinance establishing rules for the operation of wheeled devices within the city of Sherwood setting penalties and violations for said rules and for other purposes. That's the first reading as amended. So we'll make the changes, and then we'll appear on the main agenda for a second reading and go from there with an emergency clause.
Thank you all.
Okay, moving on to item eight.
Before you read that, Steve, on items eight and nine, I just wanted to point out that this aligns with the policies on how C A W D S are charged is on there, and they're asking us to bring our, our billing into alignment with theirs, and that's why, that's why eight and nine is both of those items. There's no monies involved. It's just bringing our policies in line with theirs.
Uh, an ordinance amending ordinance number twenty-one thirty-six of the city of Sherwood, Arkansas, was approved in January twenty-third of twenty-seventeen, prescribing other matters pertaining thereto and declaring an emergency for a reading.
Maybe we suspend the rules and place it on second reading?
Second.
Was that you, Tim?
Yes.
Hi.
Hi.
Brooks.
Hi.
Lilly.
Hi.
McMahon.
Hi.
Sanders.
Hi.
Harmon.
Hi.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
And ordinance amending ordinance number twenty-one thirty-six of the city of Sherwood, Arkansas, which was approved January the twenty-third, twenty-seventeen, prescribing other matters pertaining thereto and declaring an emergency. That's the second reading.
Maybe we suspend it and put it on third reading?
Hi.
Hi.
Brooks.
Hi.
Lilly.
Hi.
McMahon. Sanders. Harmon.
Hi.
Rodrick.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
And ordinance amending ordinance number twenty-one thirty-six of the city of Sherwood, Arkansas, was approved January the twenty-third, twenty-seventeen, prescribing any other matters pertaining thereto and declaring an emergency. That's the third reading.
Move for adoption.
Second. Second.
Hi.
Hi.
Brooks.
Hi.
Lilly.
Hi.
McMahon.
Hi.
Sanders. Harmon.
Hi.
Rodrick.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
There is an emergency clause.
Hi.
Hi.
Brooks.
Hi.
Lilly.
Hi.
McMahon.
Hi.
Sanders.
Hi.
Harmon.
Hi.
Rodrick.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
And ordinance amending ordinance number eighteen thirty-five regarding a collection of solid waste fees, declaring emergency, and for other purposes. That's the first reading. I'm sorry, that's the wrong one. Okay, no, that's correct. Number eighteen thirty-five regarding a collection of solid waste fees, declaring an emergency, and for other purposes. First reading.
Maybe we suspend the rules and place it on second reading?
Can I ask you a question? Does it ma, do we need to change the effective date? Does it matter that the effective date's in four days now?
I think the emergency will take care of it, won't it?
It should. Yeah, the emergency will make it immediate.
Okay, I just didn't know, I didn't know if it needed longer lead time.
No, really, what they want us to do is just to agree to their billing procedure that they've already got in place.
Okay.
Okay, the board has been read one time.
I had Marina make a motion. I need a second. Hi.
Hi.
Brooks.
Hi.
Lilly.
Hi.
McMahon.
Hi.
Sanders.
Hi.
Harmon.
Hi.
Rodrick.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
And ordinance amending ordinance number eighteen thirty-five regarding the collection of solid waste fees, declaring an emergency, and for other purposes. That's the second reading.
And the rules placed on third final reading.
Second.
Hi.
Hi.
Brooks.
Hi.
Lilly.
Hi.
McMahon.
Hi.
Sanders.
Hi.
Harmon.
Hi.
Rodrick.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
And ordinance amending ordinance number eighteen thirty-five regarding the collection of solid waste fees, declaring an emergency, and for other purposes. That's the third reading.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Hi.
Hi.
Brooks.
Hi.
Lilly.
Hi.
McMahon.
Hi.
Sanders.
Hi.
Harmon.
Hi.
Rodrick.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
And we have the emergency clause.
Hi.
Hi.
Brooks.
Hi.
Lilly.
Hi.
McMahon.
Hi.
Sanders.
Hi.
Harmon.
Hi.
Rodrick.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
With respect to the next item, number ten, regarding the increase in fees for weekly residential garbage, the mayor is requesting that this matter be tabled until the next month's meeting. Could we have a motion to that effect, please?
I'm moved. Second.
Who's, who's second did it?
Mary Jo.
Okay. Hi.
Hi.
Brooks.
Hi.
Lilly.
Hi.
McMahon.
Hi.
Sanders.
Hi.
Harmon.
Hi.
Rodrick.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
A resolution appointing Robert Reiki replacing John Jenkins to serve on the Sherwood Retirement Committee for a term to expire December the thirty-first, twenty-twenty.
Move for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Hi.
Hi.
Brooks.
Hi.
Lilly.
Hi.
McMahon.
Hi.
Sanders.
Hi.
Harmon.
Hi.
Rodrick.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
And ordinance amending the twenty-nineteen general fund budget ordinance number twenty-two twenty-four, the twenty-nineteen street fund budget ordinance number twenty-two twenty-five, the twenty-nineteen wastewater budget ordinance number twenty-two twenty-six, and the advertising, the twenty-nineteen advertising and promotion commission budget ordinance number twenty-two twenty-three, declaring an emergency and for other purposes. First reading.
Move we suspend the rules and place it on the second reading?
Second.
Hi.
Hi.
Brooks.
Hi.
Lilly.
Hi.
McMahon.
Hi.
Sanders.
Yeah.
Harmon.
Hi.
Sanders, did, did you say yes?
Yes.
Okay. Rodrick.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
And ordinance amending the twenty-nineteen general fund budget ordinance number twenty-two twenty-four, the twenty-nineteen street fund ordinance number twenty-two twenty-five, the twenty-nineteen wastewater budget ordinance number twenty-two twenty-six, and the twenty-nineteen advertising and promotion commission budget ordinance number twenty-two twenty-three, declaring an emergency and for other purposes. That is the second reading of the ordinance.
I'm moving suspend the rules and place it on the third and final reading.
Second.
Hi.
Hi.
Brooks.
Hi.
Lilly.
Hi.
McMahon.
Hi.
Sanders.
Hi.
Harmon.
Hi.
Rodrick.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
And ordinance amending the twenty-nineteen general fund budget ordinance number twenty-two twenty-four, the twenty-nineteen street fund budget ordinance number twenty-two twenty-five, the twenty-nineteen wastewater budget ordinance number twenty-two twenty-six, and the twenty-nineteen advertising and promotion commission budget ordinance number twenty-two twenty-three, declaring an emergency and for other purposes. That is the third reading.
Move for adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
Hi.
Hi.
Brooks.
Hi.
Lilly.
Hi.
McMahon.
Hi.
Sanders.
Hi.
Harmon.
Hi.
Rodrick.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
There is an emergency clause.
Hi.
Hi.
Brooks.
Hi.
Lilly.
Hi.
McMahon.
Hi.
Sanders.
Hi.
Harmon.
Hi.
Rodrick.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
And ordinance waiving the twenty-five percent penalty for businesses that have not renewed their business privilege license after April first and before July the first, twenty-twenty, declaring an emergency and for other purposes. First reading.
Suspend the rules on second reading?
Second.
Hi.
Hi.
Brooks.
Hi.
Lilly.
Hi.
McMahon.
Hi.
Sanders.
Hi.
Harmon.
Hi.
Rodrick.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
And ordinance waiving the twenty-five percent penalty for businesses that have not renewed their business privilege license after April first and before July first, twenty-twenty, declaring an emergency and for other purposes. That's the second reading.
Suspend the rules, put it on third reading? Second.
Who, who's second did that?
Marina.
Marina, okay. Hi.
Hi.
Brooks.
Hi.
Lilly.
Hi.
McMahon.
Hi.
Sanders.
Hi.
Harmon.
Hi.
Rodrick.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
And ordinance waiving the twenty-five percent penalty for businesses that have not renewed their business privilege license after April first and before July first, twenty-twenty, declaring an emergency and for other purposes. That is the third reading of the ordinance.
Okay, I got three people that, who made that motion?
I did.
One, one can be first, one second, doesn't matter.
Okay. Hi.
Hi.
Brooks.
Hi.
Lilly.
Hi.
McMahon.
Hi.
Sanders.
Hi.
Harmon.
Hi.
Rodrick.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
There is an emergency clause.
Hi.
Hi.
Brooks.
Hi.
Lilly.
Hi.
McMahon. Sanders. Sanders.
Hi.
Oh, I'm sorry. Harmon.
Hi.
Rodrick.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
Mayor, that is the agenda.
Very good, thank you. Is it any old business? New business? Angela? I'm sorry.
Have, have you started getting in the sales tax stuff to, to see how much of effect all this is going to have yet, or is it going to be next month?
It's always two months behind, so March's collections will not come till latter part of May. So we have to wait another month.
Mayor, have you decided anything about opening the gym? Are, are you going to follow what the governor says, or do you have any thoughts?
We're definitely gonna, we're not going to go before the governor. Met this afternoon with several department heads that are involved in opening things back up, senior citizen, specifically the parks. Jacksonville is considering open theirs up sooner, but today I had a meeting at eleven o'clock with all the mayors in Plasky County and North La Rock, La Rock and Sherwood. We are all in agreement. We would like to try to go together or at least hold off. We can't start opening the gym. I, in my mind, I think the first thing to close will probably be some of the last things to open back. And the, the recreation center was the first thing, and our senior citizens center. And Robert expressed today, you couldn't even get the senior citizens to come back probably when it is open for just a little while. But, um, we were discussing today, we think it's going to be almost, it may be more difficult trying to judge when to open it up than it was when to close it. So, any suggestions as it comes down the, along the way, let us know, any of you?
What about the pools, things like that?
The swimming pools?
Yeah, the outdoor.
Okay, right now, there is still a, a order in place by the Department of Health stating that all swimming pools will be closed until further notice. So that gives us some guidelines with that respect.
Okay.
Councilmember Rodrick, did you, I believe you had another question, Monica?
Did the, um, is the Optimist Club, are they in discussions with you hoping to maybe do a summer league instead of the kind of spring league that they typically do?
I believe they have a little bit of a conversation with Darren, um, but it's like everything else that we're trying to do right now, there's, there's so many unknowns. We're just, this is all new for all of us, so, um, if that's something that they desire and it's safe, I know the city will certainly work with them to make that happen.
Hey, Angela, before we quit, just a, a point, on this number thirteen, the one that we just did on the twenty-five percent penalty, we did do the emergency clause on that one, didn't we?
Yes.
Okay, just double checking.
April? There was one thing that you were concerned about, what was the fees for the splash pad that you and I had talked about. The mayor and Darren discussed that, and Darren got with me, and that, that's been postponed, decided that would be best postponed and take off the agenda for a year, considering everything that's gone on, so that's not even going to be discussed again until, um, next year, uh, considering everything that else that's gone on. So we, when the splash pad opens up, there's not going to be any fees charged this year, and, and right, Mayor, that's what was.
That's what we. And they're also, one of their communities expressed today in our mayor meeting that they were not sure if they were even going to be able to open their outside pools this year, because when the go-ahead is, when it's ready or it's time that we can safely do it, it may not be enough time. So it, it's going to be a watch and wait for those things.
So just, just one question, would you consider, it's food for thought for later, when it gets time, when the, when the governor releases maybe opening the rec center but not opening basketball yet, if that's too close contact? So people using the upstairs, they're not generally real close to each other.
That was discussed today. Um, there was a lot of conversation about how do you, how do you make sure that people, you know, it's going to depend on the governor, you know, whatever kind of guidelines he hands down that he wants us to follow. And that was discussed, that perhaps the basketball portion might not be opened at the same time. And then again, that was also discussed, if people pay a membership and that's what the amenity that they use the most, and it's not open, how are we gonna, you know, how are we going to evaluate the fee structure? There's a lot of, there's a lot of things to be considered, but they're good que, that's good questions.
Hey, and, and, you know, I know that, like, some of the, um, private club pools are looking at, um, opening but doing things to implement, like, to where they allow lap swimming or training, but not so much playtime so that they can allow that pool training time, but then putting some, some distancing things in place and really regulating, like, how close people can be to one another, so.
You know, I, I might be wrong, and, uh, Steve, you can help me here. I think we have to work under the, the Arkansas Department of Health.
Absolutely, absolutely. They, they said no until they, until further notice. I talked to Darren about that today.
I, I, I understand that, uh, but they, they have come out and said the pool water itself is safe. It's a social distancing. That is the, the thing that's really a concern. Of course, right now, it's too cold and, you know, the outdoors, but in, um, states like Florida where they've opened up things earlier, that is one of the things that they are allowing. So, you've just, you've, you've just got a lot of population that, that does, like, the swimming for training, and this is a key time. So that's why I brought it up where.
And I, I understand, but, and, you know, and the governor may, that, we could get a new directive on the pools sooner, but. But it just said until further notice. So at this point, that's all we have that we can go by. Angela, the document destruction?
Yes. We had a date set, but that was back in March, so we'll have to reschedule. We just need to get approval that we can do it and then have an alderman present. And this includes, uh, the city clerk's office and the court.
Yeah, I did it last time, the court, so. I may have a day, so I can see if I'm available?
We, we will, we will make contact and make sure. We won't schedule until, we just gotta, we have to have it in the minutes that we got approval before we can do it.
Yeah, just, we just need a voice vote, a motion and a voice vote.
I'll make the motion to do that. And with that, uh, for Angela's benefit, uh, Angela, I had already told Butch that I would be there for the, uh, district court part of it, so I can be there for both parts.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Hi.
Hi.
Brooks.
Hi.
Lilly.
Hi.
McMahon.
Hi.
Sanders.
Hi.
Harmon.
Hi.
Rodrick.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
In the way of announcements, just a reminder, I'm sorry to believe that, but next month is, uh, May, Memorial Day weekend. Our city council meeting will be on Tuesday, the 26th next month. Also, um, we have hired a city planner and they started today, so.
Really, who?
Uh, Shannon Meinhold.